The fifth day of December, time is six thirty five.
Anne Torrey?
Uh, yeah.
Rayland Rass?
Yeah.
Eileen Hogan?
Yeah.
Benny York?
Here.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Light?
Here.
Paul Kierchner?
Here.
Anna Cruz, absent. Amanda Duramus?
Here.
Do some change. Um, Eugene Horowitz?
Here.
And Chris Haven, absent.
I have a quick notice of this meeting, posting for our home. I will throw a part mail that we have a third part of press, it's in the times. Transcendental tapes. Board requires a copy of the transcript. We'll break about eight P M. to deliberation. Testimony heard thus far on conference trail on the first floor. Public is invited to attend, however, discussion between board members is not permitted at that time. When these cases will be heard after nine P M. The Bag Zoning Board of Adjustment has maintained a policy cutoff hour of nine thirty for its hearings. And the applicant I heard this evening will be carried over to the next scheduled meeting. Uh, pledgeable agent. Let me just do flag, the United States of America. Intuitively, a word for which stands a nation under God, invisible liberty and justice for all. Anyway, it's an administrative matters, uh, regular meeting the next November seventh. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Anne Torrey?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Benny York?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Vince Light?
Yes.
Paul Kierchner?
Yes.
And Amanda Duramus?
Yes.
Okay, we have resolution of approval for the board's avenue.
Hey, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. This was an approval, uh, basically for the construction of a fourth story, uh, on an existing three-story building. And utilization of that fourth story as a new two-bedroom apartment and renovation of the existing, uh, uh, second-floor apartment and third-floor apartment and other building improvements. And the gist of this was this application. The application was, uh, approved and there were a number of, of conditions. And basically, um, the main condition was, and we can adopt it subject to modification. Um, there is going to be three spaces onsite and we're going to make sure that they have three spaces offsite, uh, reserved, perpetually reserved for the residential tenants, whether it be via, uh, parking lot that the applicant owns or leases, or, uh, permitted parking, uh, from the borough of Red Bank. And there was also some discussion about the height. And upon further review, the application did need a height variance, forty feet allowed. And this, uh, under our borough definition, this proposal was forty-four feet. Remember, there was a little discussion about the stair tower being fifty feet in height. But that's, um, if the stair tower is under fifteen feet, which this was, it does not count towards height. So this building was a forty-four-foot-tall building and we'll have that clarified. So, Mr. Chairman, if this is acceptable to the board, we can adopt this as modified.
Okay, somebody like to make a motion to approve?
I'll approve it.
I'll second.
Anne Torrey?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Benny York?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vince Light?
Yes.
And Amanda?
Calvano?
Calvano.
Calvano?
Yes.
And we need to vote on the solution of extension one seven three.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, this board previously approved, um, the application for one seven three Maple LLC. And that is basically as a renovation of an existing, uh, dwelling, demolition of an existing detached garage, installation of improvements to the existing facade, construction of a three-story addition, um, conversion of the structure from a single-family home to a mixed-use development. And basically, that was approved roughly April seventh, two thousand twenty-two. They previously ran into, uh, securing out a difficulty in securing outside approvals. So we gave them a prior extension. And that extension ends December forty-first of this year. The applicants have requested a three-month extension. And what I'm told is that, um, the board might be inclined to grant a six-month extension. So if that is the case, I've taken the liberty of preparing a resolution saying, uh, basically for good cause having been, uh, presented, um, now therefore be rethought by the members of the Red Bank zoning board in fairness follows that the timeframe for the building permit to be issued in connection with the subject application is hereby further extended to, and we're going to say June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five, correct?
Right.
And then all other terms and conditions of the board resolution, unless specifically changed, from what I just said, shall remain in full force and effect. So if we can have a, we'll do a two-for-one, uh, a motion to grant the extension and adopt that resolution.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the extension and grant the
Resolution?
The resolution.
Grant the extension?
And approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
Anne Torrey?
Yes.
Rayland?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Benny York?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vince Light?
Yes.
Paul? Kierchner?
I voted no on the resolution.
Which one?
That he's talking about what?
No.
No.
This is, uh, one seventy-three.
Oh, Maple, I recuse myself, didn't I? Can I vote on the extension?
If you recuse yourself, yeah, probably not.
Yeah.
Okay, then, um, Amanda Calvano?
Yes.
And Eugene Horowitz?
Yes.
And Shauna, do we do, um, a motion to?
Uh, we'll do that at the real.
Okay.
That was just for.
Okay. Now, Vincent, uh, one ninety-six Broad Street. Mr. McKenna?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself for this application.
Thank you.
All right, and just for the record, uh, our friend Vince is going to recuse himself because he owns property within two hundred feet of, uh, the development site. So thank you, uh, for that disclosure. And, um, Shauna, I believe there's a borough ordinance that says, uh, the minutes have to reflect well, uh, when there's a recusal. And then the resolution has to reflect that as well. And so a couple of things here, uh, you'll recall, we were present here on October seventeenth, uh, two thousand twenty-four. And, and we adjourned it to tonight without the need for any further public notice. And I think I spoke with Sean and I spoke with Ed McKenna, the applicant's attorney. Uh, we didn't have too much, uh, substantive professional testimony. Um, so I think, uh, the easiest thing to do in terms of having people listen to sort of, and, and, and certify tapes. And more importantly, subsequent to that, Mr. McKenna revived, significantly revised plans were submitted. So my recommendation would be that we just start all over, um, for our conversation. I understand you're okay with that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so what we'll do is we will just swear in, uh, Jackie Dermon, our, uh, board engineer, and also Shauna Ebanks, our planner, or the, uh, eight planner, who's also the director of community development. Uh, so, uh, ladies, if you could raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Yes.
Okay, so both have been sworn, thank you. And then, uh, just for conflict of interest purposes, um, the, uh, entity here is one nine six Broad LLC. Uh, the disclosure form indicates that the, um, principals are Carl Fortunato, Craig Carter, and Frank Modarella the third. Hearing those names, does that cause any concerns or questions about concerns or conflicts? Seeing none, so that's good. And then last but not least, we will mark into the record what we as a board have, uh, before us. So let's see, first up, it's going to be A one, is going to be the Red Bank Department of Planning and Zoning Application Package. And then A two is going to be the proposed minor subdivision, uh, plan prepared by Think Design Architecture, dated December first, two thousand twenty-three, revised through November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, consisting of four sheets. A three is the survey prepared by Morgan Engineering, and that's dated September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. A four is the variance response letter prepared by Frank Modarella and, uh, of Think Design, and that's dated July second, two thousand twenty-four. A five is a response to the first engineering review letter, uh, prepared by Ed McKenna, and that's dated October tenth, two thousand twenty-four. A six is the response letter prepared by Think Design Architecture, dated November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. And I think that was in a form of a communication to Mr. McKenna. And A seven is the survey of property prepared by Morgan Engineering, dated March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. And we're going to mark as A eight, the T and M Associates Review Memorandum, dated December fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, Sean, I think that's everything. So, um, if we're missing anything, we'll get it, uh, but we turn it over to Ed McKenna. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, uh, here with all the members of the board. Thank you for, um, sharing your time with us this evening. Um, if I could just give you a very brief description, description that I'm going to call Mr. Modarella to stand. Um, this property, as you may recall, was comprised of a dental office, or the office building, located at, uh, on Broad Street, uh, one ninety-six Broad Street. And that is lot fourteen. And then lot fifteen is the law, basically, a quarter of the way to the new lot. Lot sixteen. Uh, lot fourteen, when I say that, there is definitely a lot. Um, they went one of them. And that is owned by the Cayman team. But we are seeing approval here, subdivision of lot sixteen, um, so that that could create a, uh, dwelling lot in the, in the correct zone, the residential zone. And the office is in the correct zone, that's the P O zone. So from a zoning standpoint, each of the lot can be informed. And the question boils down to the details, and that is what variances and slash or design waivers may be necessary uh, in connection with the approval. Through, um, the time that we submitted the original application, uh, subsequent to that, as you recall, um, we were originally at the planning board and then we were advised to come to the zoning board. And unfortunately, that, we didn't discover that until just before the meeting. So we didn't have a time, an adequate amount of time to change the plans. However, um, we made an attempt to answer, uh, to, to the board concerns that were raised in the engineering letter. And quite frankly, and I fully understand what the board's position was, even though we thought we had responses, the board said, you know what, we want to see a revised plan. And we got it. And that's true. And so I want to thank Jackie and everybody for your comments. And, um, what I'd like to do is, sort of, run a square in. And we're going to try to give you a combination of his testimony and how we responded to concerns based in the.
Okay, and just one other, uh, real quick thing, we talked about this at the last time, but just, um, Mr. McKenna brought up a good point. Just for all of you zoning aficionados out there, typically, a subdivision would be before the planning board, which is where they were. And the only time a subdivision comes before us as the zoning board is when there's a use variance attached to it. And, uh, Jackie was a little bit of a tortured, uh, uh, analysis. But ultimately, I think we all came to the conclusion that because a portion of the off-street park, because this is a mixed zone, and because a portion of the off-street parking for the mixed commercial slash residential use is going to be located in the residential district, we sort of said, hey, um, when push comes to shove, we think that's a use variance, so that's why we're here. So, all right, uh, thank you. And, uh, if you could just state your name and address and we'll swear you in.
Frank Modarella the third. Located at one oh three Main Avenue, Red Bank, New Jersey.
Okay, and just spell your last name, please.
M A R T A R E L L A.
All right, and good evening and, uh, welcome back to the Red Bank zoning board. If you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the testimony information you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Yes.
Okay, and just for the record, I, um, I recall that when we swore you in last time, and again, we're starting over. But, um, I recall you are a principal of the applicant, because we said your name.
Yes.
And, and you're also a licensed architect.
Yes.
And you're testifying in both capacities? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, good. Um, Mr. Modarella, um, you made very substantial, um, amendments to your prior plan in response to the, uh, comments that we received from the T and M engineers, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And can you go, go take the board through the plan and the revisions, um, so that they feel comfortable with what efforts you set forth?
Mr. McKenna?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, and then, then, uh, address the T and M letter and all the revisions that were made in response to their concerns.
Sure. Uh, I would say that, uh, most of the revisions, uh, focused on, uh, the parking area as well as the, um, the screening or the planting, uh, beds that are required. Um, previously, uh, the drawings, um, didn't have a compliant A D A parking spot. And as such, that spot needed to be updated. And when I made the update to that parking spot, obviously, I could, there's two ways that a van-accessible parking spot can be achieved. You can have an eight-foot-wide van-accessible parking spot with an eight-foot accessory area, um, next to it. Or you can make, make an eleven-foot parking spot, uh, for the van and a five-foot, um, designated area next to it, next to that spot. So I chose to make the spot a little bit bigger, knowing that it's a van, I went with the eleven-foot-wide parking spot. When I did that, parking spots one through seven, seven being the van-accessible, uh, all needed to shift. Right, because the parking spot for the van went from eight to eleven, three feet. I shifted parking spaces one through seven to the west. Um, and as such, then, uh, modified the planting that was directly adjacent to the proposed building, um, which, uh, which runs continuous in the north-south direction. Um, in addition with that, we, the previous admission was, uh, lacking some of the required planting, uh, screening, planting beds along lot lines and so forth. So I made an update, uh, for that. Uh, we also reduced some of the impervious area. We, we modified the proposed residential driveway. Uh, we modified it from a, from a paved surface to a gravel, uh, surface. We, we, we also interacted with some of the, the, the neighbors on the block, took their comments, um, and tried to, uh, incorporate, uh, whatever their concerns were into the drawings. I feel they were relatively minor, um, so I'm not really going to focus too much on them, but there was concern about some, some planting. We tried to achieve that. There was a concern about drainage, uh, uh, you know, the direction of the orientation of the drainage. So I, I did my best to indicate the proposed drainage scheme and show that it would drain away from the lot line, uh, on the east side of the residence. Um, we incorporated some yard drains to also capture some of that water that may accumulate from the rain. Um, but I think that overall, um, summarizes the, the, the updates and the revisions that we made. But again, all of it based on the previous comments from T and M.
And if I might, um, just take a moment, um, it was suggested to us at the last meeting that we meet, uh, with the neighbors. So we sent out the neighboring property owners a letter and some were able to attend, a couple of who were not. I think we had six people there, if I recall correctly. Um, and we had, they were very pleasant, there, there was a good discussion. Unfortunately, I know you couldn't make it, I understood. And but, um, what am I saying? And Mr. White was there, uh, and it was a, it was a very productive discussion. We spent a great deal of time with them and, um, we did our best to try to address the concerns that were raised at that time. Um, there was, uh, substantial plantings, as, uh, Mr. Modarella pointed out, added to the plans. And if you don't mind, please take them through all the additional plantings you added since the last plan.
Oh, sure. Um, so I think I, I might have touched upon it a moment ago, but, uh, the first area was along western property line, uh, that separates lot sixteen, uh, from the neighboring property to the west. Um, previously, none of that, uh, or minimal planting was along that lot line. Uh, so now we've included vegetation from, uh, for the full length of that lot line. Uh, similar and likewise along the northern property line. Uh, in the previous admission, we had the five-foot planting strip, um, on the northern side of the parking space or the north side of parking spaces one through seven. But we kind of stopped it short of continuing, uh, the full length through lot sixteen. So we've added the, um, planting and shrubbery in that area as well. We also increased the width of the planting areas along, uh, which are common between lot sixteen and fifteen, as well as common between lot fourteen and fifteen. Um, I believe we had the planting bed along, common along lot fourteen and fifteen, but it was only two feet wide. We've increased it to be three feet wide, so it's compliant. And previously, we did not have the planting con, along the common lot line between sixteen and fifteen. We've now added that in as well as made that, uh, compliant at the three-foot width. Um, and then also trees, right? Um, so we previously didn't have the compliance with the shade trees. We indicated, uh, compliance with the shade trees. And, and overall, I'm happy to say that I think that, uh, the amount of planting and trees, you know, combined altogether is probably almost double what's actually required.
Okay, and, um, I know that some of the concerns that were raised, um, addressed issues that we made significant changes to the plans on. And you would, you've addressed some of them right there. Um, also, however, these, there, there was a request to show a floor plan for the single-family home, uh, which you prepared, correct? And, um, then there were some comments received from, uh, a rural engineer today. Uh, we actually were fortunate enough to have time for a brief discussion. And who prepared those plans, uh, did not specify setbacks on the plans, but it has been suggested by the captain to do that, and we'll have those setbacks set forth on the revised plans. So, so anybody that comes in to, uh, build a house there will know before they walk in what their setbacks requirements will be. And the reason for that is because those two parking spaces approach a little bit, not standard size for that lot. So as far as the setbacks are concerned. So you want to let the people know or alert anybody who wants to build a house, what their setbacks are again. So I'm going to thank us and then for that, um, suggestion. Now, there are a number of other things that, um, if I can go to the T and M letter, and I'm not going to do this necessarily in same order as the letter. I'm trying to do. Page two of the revised letter, plus a number of different aspects of the plan, and a fair amount of comments. Some changes that we have made. Um, some of the concerns always. One point four, in the area that is unclear, which you asked me to ask the other week. Um, there's, there's a five-foot, like, buffer area landscaping screen provided on lot sixteen, less than the driveway easement, but the jump upper area provided on, what, fourteen itself. Um, now, I would, some of the bases for that is you've got the driveway there, you've got access to the, to the rear of the premises. So you wouldn't have the opportunity to place a buffer here. So, you know, that is the basis. Correct?
Correct.
So it would really be impossible to put a buffer along the rear of lot fourteen. To eliminate access to the parking area, the existing analog, which is a, I mean, a whole building for many, many years. Correct?
Correct.
So we've, uh, asked for that to be eliminated. Um, question is, um, do we need, um, any relief for that? And, um, there's, I guess, some question as to that, but as far as we're concerned, it's, it's just impractical aspect of plan. We can't close in with a buffer or, or entire parking area for the, uh, business property that's been there all along.
Correct. Correct, and, and I might just, if I can add.
Absolutely.
Just suggest again, I, I think that's correct. I mean, obviously, uh, based on the proposal, the way it's submitted, we would be unable to provide the five-foot planting bed along the common real lot line for fourteen and sixteen. But I, I would just like to say or suggest that we did take that five-foot planting buffer and move it to the west so that it is directly adjacent to the existing, oh, I'm sorry, to the proposed, uh, one-family residence.
Okay. And, um, there's a comment in one point five of the letter about the calculation of the square feet. And the way that we conducted it, the way that they thought it should be done, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, so that in the event that, um, I, I think that the confusion is over what area was calculated. And perhaps you could address that, that as far as your, what you utilized, understand, to, uh, come up with your calculation.
Yes, so, so I spoke to Ed about this. The comment, uh, one point five states, the applicant shall recalculate, I'm sorry, the applicant shall recalculate the lot coverage to include the proposed driveway easement as part of lot sixteen, even though it's part of lot fourteen. Um, I did do that. The, the driveway easement area is two thousand four hundred and eighteen square feet, which is referenced in the response from T and M. Um, so the way I interpret it, the driveway easement, twenty-two thousand four hundred and eighteen square feet should be calculated into part of lot sixteen, which I did. I'm just mildly confused as to the response from T and M as to whether it's saying that we did it correctly or that it wasn't done correctly, or some other version of that.
Sure. Oh, okay. Um, so so I guess in your impervious surface calculations, um, you're saying in three thousand seven hundred eighty-eight in your book table, that includes the two thousand four, that includes the, the driveway easement, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's.
So you're, uh, okay, so it's the house and the, the pavement.
Correct.
Um, okay, I would agree with that.
Thank you. Um.
Yeah, so, um, just.
Yeah.
And one point five has been addressed to your satisfaction?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Then, um, the, in one point six, when, as Mr. Modarella said, when we, um, moved the, uh, the area slightly over for the two parking spaces, we ended up with, um, two nine-foot-wide areas instead of ten, ten feet. Um, and there's a question as to whether or not you may need additional variance. We notified, well, we said. We notified, well, we sent out the public notice, Mr. Kennedy. We, we did say any other variances that might be, was as a result of the review of the plans. It's only two feet. And we're suggesting that if in fact board being the initial variance necessary, it's only to accommodate the handicap spot. And it's, it's only two feet. So we're asking that in the event that the board gives an additional variance to be necessary, since we just discovered this, we ask that, because we noticed the additional, any additional variance, then we would respectfully request that, or consider that. Number two, on page seven, point one, it said it has to do with slopes and additional radiation information. And we will have some depositability before that. Two point two, we've already addressed, and we are going to just put a note on the plans that we did revise the plans to accommodate the recommendation of T and M. Two point three, this addresses the utility repair area that is on our plans. But we are going to actually submit the actual utility locations that T and M suggested we do. So that's two point three. That, that is very simple for us to do. And we will put it on the plans and the board, whatever the final plan came out to be, it would be on that. Point four, the curb on Lloyd Street is currently slated. If you believe that the curb that the county wants is concrete, so on our plan. We will confirm it, the county, we recall, verbally, that they want a concrete. But we'll confirm it, and once we confirm it, if we need to change the plan, we will. Right now, it shows it was concrete, but we were told orally by the county that that's what they. Two point five is just a survey unit that we have to pay. Six, the county right away. The, at the last hearing, there was a question raised about one of the units that's closest to the office building. It has to have a K turn when they gave the premises. And we had indicated at that time, Mr. Martorello, that it's right, that has always been a tenant's parking space. And we agreed to continue it as a tenant's parking space. It's listed up on the plan.
And I'm sorry, what number is this, Mr. McKenna?
I'm sorry, it is three point two.
Thank you.
It's on page eight.
Got it.
And, and we indicated it last time, Mr. Martorello, that is correct, right? It's just for the tenant only.
Correct.
And T and M suggested we put a sign up, and we completely agree to do that. Also, three point three is the handicap space. And they asked us to put a sign up for that, which we will do. I, I know it sounds simple, but I just want to try to address everything so the board feels comfortable. Three point four, A and B, I would, I would, question on those. C. It says requires a five-foot structural landscaping strip along the side of here of lot sixteen with fifteen. We want to address that. We are able to preserve the twenty-four-foot-wide driveway, which was required. But in doing so, we could only get five feet as opposed to what was suggested. And therefore, I'm sorry, we were only able to get three feet. So we, we had requested a design waiver previously, and we're asking the board to consider that. Again, because there's just no place to go. Before, we had no planting there. Now we've added planting, a whole row, but we're just asking for a design waiver because it's not out of the room unless we shrink the driveway. The driveway meets recessed standards and it's official cartway, so we don't want to pinch on that. We, we actually, last time we addressed this before the applicant requests again. The question was raised as to trash. And there is so little trash. The dental office has one standard garbage can that they put out to the street that the borough picks up. Any hazardous waste that the dental office has is picked up on as needed basis. It's not that active in office, and we'll talk about that in a minute, as far as hours are concerned. Right, that's correct, right, Mr. McKenna? The next two comments. As far as, excuse me, as far as three point seven, three point eight, we were, we addressed those. We are going to include the HVAC component on the plans. And the existing driveway on Wayfield Place will be built exactly according to the borough ordinance. Three point nine, we're requesting by T and M to take the entire parking lot that is now at the property and to redo the entire parking lot. And we are going to do that. And we'll comply with that request. Three point ten, we have complied with. That was a request for a plan and. For, it's commonly concerning. Yard, but what we did was, we had some discussion about where to locate a house but limited area would be available. It's not the biggest yard in the world, but we did everything we could to accommodate that. And the landscaping buffer will be maintained. And we'll put a note on the plans that. And three point twelve, we again indicated that we will provide both setbacks. Three point one-three, we will do a larger plan scale. It's determined, okay, if that's, that was requested, we'll be happy to comply with that. And, excuse me, the, the plans indicate a scale of one to fifteen. We will revise the plans so that it'll be scaled correctly. It's just a calculation. And the survey that we had submitted originally, it was the new survey, somehow or another, in the packet, the old survey got submitted. So we're just going to replace that with the new survey. We, we have both. The traffic impact, it's only going to be a single-family dwelling. And we submitted our comments on that. And the, the board engineer agreed that it's only a single-family dwelling, traffic generated, which would not have any impact. And we have designed circulation plans, not provided previously. And then there were some requests concerning delivery vehicle. We had actually addressed this, left on, that we're happy. There will be no deliveries that access the site, and they haven't had them before. Say deliveries, they do have the hazardous waste vehicle that shows up and will take the hazardous waste and walk it out to the vehicle. Vehicle comes in and then leaves immediately. So there's no parking necessary, other than for the transmission of the hazardous waste to that vehicle. There's no private garbage pickup. And of course, we'll defer to the town as far as any fire truck circulation. And we indicated, the last comment, the residential unit, we've already agreed to do everything we were supposed to do, and will do. Bottom of page ten, number five. Limited grading spots, they supplemented, we will absolutely do that. And we had a discussion, am I going to page eleven? That there's an existing dry well. It was suggested to us that we consider putting a separate dry well for the residential unit. And, Mr. Kennedy, we will do that. Five point five, the axle driveway. We will provide a minimum of one thirty-four. And we absolutely plan on doing it, that's why we have our plans. Landscaping and lighting. Right, why didn't you address that? I know you talked about the plant, you don't have to go through. I think, not plantings or trees, unless anybody has any specific questions. But we did agree to put in the shade trees, correct?
Correct.
And as far as lighting is concerned, there was, I, I also, I'm sorry, six. And we also did address the landscaping schedule spacing that was commented on by in the fire plan. The buffer area and screening not provided on lot fourteen in favor of lot sixteen. We, since we already addressed that earlier, that was set forth in one point four. And then we did address that. What was it, discussion last time, very briefly? We discussed it with the neighbors, specifically Mr. White was one of the neighbors that discussed this. That is, there's some bamboo on the north side of the property, and it's very invasive. And we agreed that we would remove the bamboo. West side?
West side.
Oh, it's the west side? Okay, I'm sorry. No, west and north, okay. And, and we will do that and. Oh, you'll be observant and be the board's firm advisor on that. But we have agreed to reevaluate and to undertake procedures to make sure it doesn't come back. But if anybody that's ever noticed how, it can be, even after you remove it, it attempts to come back. So we're going to take whatever acts are necessary to prevent the problem in that regard. Now, in, we're up to six point eight on T and M's letter, it's page twelve. Lighting schedules included, but we wanted to let you know that we are going to provide both the illumination values. And we were advised that we will clearly provide the minimum illumination. But in addition to that, we are also going to take the option of the lighting pole that we planned to purchase to prevent any spillage, and we'll provide the detail to the board engineer to make sure that they approve of that selection. Any spillage on any. As far as outdoor lighting during non-operating hours on the business site. Ironically, T and M in six point ten, on page thirteen, suggested possibly activating by motion sensor devices. They just did it last week and met and had done it on their own before they had the comment. So they, they will have motion detector devices. And predominantly because this time of year for the dental office, if anybody comes out, we want to make sure, but also for the residential use. We want to make sure that the resident, someone at one o'clock in the morning, still find his way around. So we are, have already undertaken the step and ordered the motion sensing devices. We, we aren't going to provide the beats and bounds descriptions, we're going to order them. That, that's on seven point one. The architectural floor plans on seven point two, we have provided them. And they do depict a single-family structure that can be built. Right now, we do not anticipate that we will be the builder. But we, we supply them at the board requested it. And it shows what can be built, but we can't guarantee the board what a subsequent purchaser of the lot may wish to do. But they're, they will be saddled with, or they are going to have to comply with setbacks that if we, if we get approval, those setbacks are going to be imposed upon the person that comes in to do the construction of a home on that property. We don't think it'll cause any problems, but we need to know ahead of time what they, what they can do in force, and how this is concerned. There was a suggestion in prior letter about fixing up the stairwell. That had already been done. So that was accomplished. And we got permits, stair was done, it's all been done. Seven point four. Hours of operation and number of employees. If you'd like, Mr. Martorello, if you don't mind, just tell the board what the dental office does.
Yeah, so the dental office, there's one dentist, he has two assistants. Perhaps one is a dental hygienist, but there's a total of three employees. He works right now twenty, I believe it's twenty hours a week. He's closed Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Wednesday, I believe. The other three days is how he splits his, his twenty hours. Low traffic.
I'm sorry, closed on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Wednesday?
Believe.
Thank you.
All Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Wednesday, yes.
Thank you.
It's a small practice, I, I want to say. Just, I want to have a slow pace, what else to say?
Keep me open on when you're getting done, possibly. One, because a lot of dentists work a half a day.
I, I don't know.
I actually don't think those hours are ready.
It just closed on Wednesday, it opened Monday.
You know what, just, we want to make this, and I appreciate it, and we're going to get the information from you.
We're going to sure you're waiting.
And so, but thank you.
So he's, he's twenty hours a week, Tuesday, eleven to seven, Thursday, nine.
On Tuesday, eleven to seven.
Thursday, nine to six. Friday, nine to one. Those are the three days he works, and then obviously the other four, he's closed. Those are the three days he works, and then obviously the other four he's closed.
Thank you.
Seven point five says we need to set a three on twelve, and obviously we'll. And we will continue to work with D and M. We supply them, anything, any additional thing, they may deepness. We've gone a long way and taken every suggestion that they provided us. And on our best, we try to accommodate every suggestion to the best of our ability. Anything else, Mortarella?
I think we have everything in the letter.
Oh, yes, also, Mr. Morel has.
I'll just say, what he's handing out is, we, I provided the floor plans and a elevation, two dimensional drawings as part of the plans that were submitted to you. I just went one step further and put together some color artistic renderings to depict what that house, you know, in front of look like. It's the same, it's two different drawings there, they're both the exact same house, just different colors. But it's, again, just an artistic rendition of what the house is potentially could look like.
Hold on, let's just, this is gonna, we're gonna mark this as A nine, and A nine is a rendering prepared by Think Design, and this is, is there a date on this?
No date.
So we'll put today's date, December fifth, two thousand twenty four, and this is what a a house could look like, but this is not the house that's definitely going to be built.
Absolutely.
Any questions for Mr. Morel?
I have a question or two. The house could be built. You were saying, you know, you were speaking of the setbacks, you're going to tell whoever's building and all. It seems like there's a lot that, you know, has to be figured out on this, but can the house be built the way you drew it? Are the setbacks, everything, it can be, I just want somebody ahead in here, and then we, it's like an unbuildable property and we're generally rigging it again.
It's a great question, but floor plans and the elevation shown on sheet sub at four hundred is the exact footprint and size of the house that's depicted on the within the site plan on drawing sheet sub one hundred, and it is a house that can be built on this.
Within what you just testified and everything.
Correct.
Okay, the ADA space, my other thing, two point one, the ADA space, I just have a question about the grading, because it kind of comes up, whether I interpret it correctly or not, it kind of comes up in five point one again. Like it's missing in five, I just wanted to know that that.
Perhaps T and M can clarify what the objection is, because I'm not sure how to respond. I know the parking spot is going to be very inaccessible, it needs the required size. It is a for all intents and purposes, the spot is flat, there's no, there's no curbs to step over for the van or when you're disembarking from the van to the accessible, handing up accessible aisle directly adjacent. So I'm not exactly sure how to respond unless it.
Need additional spot elevations to confirm everything that you just said. I don't see that on the plan, so we ask that you provide that.
Okay, and then that's a, like, it has to be approved, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, if we give you the spot.
Have to comply with it all, okay.
The site seems relatively flat. Okay, so it's not like on a steep slope where they can't do it. I think they can do it, they just need to confirm that they can do it.
Okay, all right, that's.
Thanks, just a little unclear on three dot twelve. The first statement appears this house has been rotated. Does that speak to like orientation of property? I'm just not clear what that means.
I'm not real clear either. We didn't state, I, we didn't state that the house was rotated, that's a comment from T and M.
It just, it. When we were reviewing the plans this week, when we received them, it looked like when we overlaid it that the house was rotated, but also the scale of the plans are not quite accurate, so maybe you didn't rotate it, it was hard to tell. It looked, I don't think the property lines are exactly perpendicular, correct?
Yes.
So I don't know if you took a pivot point and, and rotated it a little bit, do be parallel or?
So, so in response, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so maybe you could explain.
So in response, you're a hundred percent correct. The, the property lines that run in the north to south orientation are not perfectly parallel, or I should say, the building as a situate is not perfectly parallel with the, with the side property lines. So it doesn't appear as if they're, well, they're not, they're not perfectly aligned. So the house is a little skewed, if you will, but, but for clarity's sake, the footprint of the building, the orientation of the building has not been changed or rotated from the previous emission.
Okay.
Thanks, I just have one more. The plans for the potential house that would be there, you said, how large were footage is that?
The, I'm sorry, the, the overall footprint, the overall footprint of the building is thirty by forty five. We proposed a cellar, a first floor and a second floor, so it's a little bit over twelve hundred, almost thirteen hundred square feet per floor.
Sorry, approximately thirteen hundred square feet.
And I could give you the exact.
Or floor, you said?
Yes, sir.
Footage include the basement?
I'd have said Jackie does.
I didn't think so.
I don't think so, I don't think so, but I think the, I think it, when I calculated, it was thirteen fifty per.
So it's like twenty six, twenty seven?
Thirteen sixty five per floor, I'm sorry.
Do you know what I'm saying, like how that compares with other houses on Waverly, is that?
I think it's, I would say that it's in scale and proportion with houses in the area, there's certainly some houses that are smaller, there's certainly some houses that are bigger.
Okay.
My opinion that it's proportion and scale with the area.
Okay, thank you.
I think part of that is the basement. If you consider a full basement, then that's, that's almost making it as large as it seems, you know what I mean? If you take away the basement, the living space is twenty seven.
Well, well, again, it's thirteen sixty five, one thousand three hundred sixty five square feet. You times that by a true plus for the first and second floor, two thousand seven hundred thirty, and then the basement is the same, one thousand three hundred sixty five square.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Okay, any questions from the public for?
Mr. Morel.
Come on up. Why don't you come on up and we'll swear you in, you can give your name and address and then ask your questions, so you're named.
Hi, I'm Isabel Thompson, I'm in the one fifty six Waverly Place, I actually live on the other end of the block, but.
You know, we're just going to swear you in to make this all legal. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide, that it will be the truth, best you know, to help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm here not only for the, you know, as being part of the neighborhood and understanding, you know, what's happening, not only on that end of the block where a lot of my other neighborhood friends live, but also talking about property that is right directly next to me, which we now have, I've learned that we are extending their permit till now June thirtieth. So that has not been completed, as my understanding is that there is a contingency requirement that needs to be met. With that all being said, I'd love to hear that you're going to beautify what is there currently and, and, you know, help the neighborhood look as beautiful, and I like what I'm hearing for that. My concern is that though, that it's, there is going to be a huge impact on the traffic and the parking especially. If you are related with Waverly Place at all, you will know that the street is very narrow in comparison to most streets in our area. Leroy, Irvine, Rockless, those are just the few in the immediate area. And we had complaints many times to the town about parking, overflow of parking, our residences that live on the street, not all of us own a house that has a driveway, some of us own houses that share a driveway, so the overflow of parking for the residences is super important, which is not addressed ever because we have problems parking. So to add insult to injury, to have more homes being built, which not necessarily against that, but the size of this home, you're saying is thirteen hundred square feet per floor. The houses on Waverly Place average the size of the houses in whole, not including basements, are maybe a total of thirteen hundred square feet, not per floor, so that is very different than the house that I'm hearing, maybe I'm misunderstanding, which could be the case. So the parking that's going to be overflowed from houses and now if they want to add some, it is going to affect the overflow of parking right onto Waverly, which is already an issue. On top of it, there's elderly people on our street who need to be close to their homes, so if they can't park in front of their homes, that's an issue. We have recently learned that one of our neighbors is, has recently become incapacitated and, and is requiring handicap parking. There is none, and they don't have a driveway. So if she cannot park in front of her home, that's an issue. So I guess my concern is, is that the traffic that I'm seeing is very different than what's being conveyed, so I'd like to understand a little bit how the town's going to help the current residents, is the way the street is already at, be taken care of. And then help us understand how it's going to happen when this beautiful property is going to be renovated for, you know, what you're proposing, which I understand. The other concern is, should the other gentleman on the other side of the street get his permit and the contingency comes up, we're adding insult to injury. So I understand currently what the state looks like, of what it, what it could be. But there's no talk about what's going to happen in the future, and the dentist that has the property right now, that is only open twenty hours a week. What happens if he retires in five to ten years and somebody else, and that building's already assigned for a business, another dentist can come in, a chiropractor office can come in, and they can be open seven days a week, nine to five every day, and have patients in and out, that would impact the traffic and the parking on our street. So I just feel like at some point, where does that be looked, where is that being looked at? I understand, we want to make the town look beautiful, we want our streets to look beautiful, I'm all for that in doses, so that's, that's where I think, and any of my other neighbors have additional concerns.
And, and just for the record, do you have any questions for this witness yet?
I, I mean, my question is, what's, how is, how do you plan on resolving that issue? With the parking, how are you going to guarantee that the overflow won't go onto the street where it affects the other residents who live on Waverly Place? Because we already have the issue with the, the law offices on the planner, and though I think they try to be extremely careful and very conscious, and, you know, I get it, it's business. It happens, and delivery trucks, you can put every sign on the planet, they're double parking, they're blocking the street, people who get worked on in their homes, so there's got to be a different solution other than just saying, we don't think it's a problem.
That's a.
A mouthful.
It's, no, 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 I understand the concern, it's, it's a it's a common concern. But I, I don't really, I, there's no guarantee I can make, I can't guarantee that the one family house is going to have occupants with two cars. I can't guarantee they're gonna have four cars or zero, right, they, they could be pure commuters and there's no cars and the impact is, there is no impact, I, I'm not really sure how, I, I can't answer that question, but it's a one family house with two off-street parking spaces typically. Or, you know, a, a family would have two cars and, and then they have two off-street parking spaces in the driveway. Potentially, they could fit a third if, you know, in front, sorry.
I go off the reckless place, so I know the area very, very well at my office. It's right next to Waverly, so I'm go by there every day, yes. And, and I really do understand and appreciate your concerns. The fact of the matter is, we're not creating any problems, we're not adding to the problems. We are meeting all the research standards as far as the number of parking spaces. And we're providing parking in the, in the driveway of the home. And in addition to that, quite frankly, in the off-hours, there would be opportunities, I would suspect. There might be people that once in a while park in other parking lot. If you know what I mean, I'm not saying that that ever happens, but it, it could very well happen that when the dental office is closed, people might want to avail themselves of those spaces. And, and I don't think that anybody's going to be chasing them out of there, but if anything, I think it might be an opportunity for a little bit, not a lot, but we can't solve that problem, you know, we can't.
But no one parks in those other two lots you're proposing to put these lot in and the building, so right now there isn't that extra traffic. There isn't anybody parking in that, that empty lot with the, where the bamboo is next to Vince's house. There is nobody parking behind the other home, so there is no excess traffic coming in at the moment. There will be when that's built, which was, which will add the traffic and the problem and the parking that I think some of the people on the street are concerned with. And then when the other property should get built after the permit is lifted and then that's going to add additional traffic, and I just feel like, when does it, when does it stop? Because the street is literally half the size of Rockless. You can only park on one side of the street. And I've seen on several occasions, because I work from home, so I am very aware of what happens on the street. People drive very fast, there's accidents almost all the time, people's driveways get blocked. So, and that's without this being done. So I think this is, I don't know what the question exactly is, I guess my concern is, when, what, what can we do together, maybe? What's the next solution? Do we make it through the one-way? Do we require residents to have a parking space, you know, allowing them to have their own personal parking space in front of their homes? I don't know. Because, because something has to give.
I, I have a little bit of experience in the government body, and I can tell you this, that's, that's where that needs to be addressed. I'm being right up front. If, if, for example, if the majority of the residents, well, it should be in one-way, I could see that, I think, but I really don't. Then I think you've got to petition the municipality. And if the borough says, okay, and that goes, I'll tell you the procedure goes through. You go to the, you go to the mayor and the council. You tell them that's what you want to do, then you go to the chief of police, he employs the traffic safety officer. They do traffic counseling, those types of things, they'll make observations, and then if they agree with your positions, they'll change it, they will.
So Mr. Morel, as, as, as somebody who's going to be building something on our street, So Mr. Mortarella, as a, as a, as somebody who's gonna be building something on our street. Would that be something that you would be on board with the rest of the residents on Waverly Place to make this a one-way? Street to help with the concerns that the residents have?
Well, here's, here's the problem. Mr. Mortarella, it may not be the person that builds the house. You know what I mean? So, um, I don't know that. If, if I were the traffic safety officer, I don't know that I'd really. Necessarily care about his opinion, not, not to slight Mr. Mortarella, but. The dental office is modest. You're talking about a two, you know, a. Single-family home with really capacity for two cars. So I would suggest that at that point, and, um, as, as someone, quite frankly, if that's an office within a block of there. I, I'd support it. I would. I, I would, I would have no problem. And so I, I think, although I think it should go from both of them.
Right.
Towards the Y?
The main down to what? Really?
Because people cut through it to go to the Y.
I'll still support.
Cause people go through it to go to, all the time and they drive very fast to go down that street to go to the Y. They cut through.
All right. Were there any other questions for Mr. Mortarella? Mr. Light. All right, name and address.
In Sunlight, twenty Waverly Place, Red Bank, New Jersey.
Okay, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, excuse me, will be the truth, the best you're known to help you got?
I do.
And just, uh, because we said it last time, but we sort of at the beginning, we said last meeting didn't really count, so let me just do this again. Before Mr. uh, Light makes any comments, um, obviously he refused himself from this, uh. Uh, from the board for tonight's application, which is the right thing to do because he's, has owns property within two hundred feet of the development site. Uh, but the law is very clear that, uh, because Vince is a good guy and volunteers on this board. Doesn't mean he loses or surrenders his rights to, uh, submit applications, oppose applications, support applications. So I think, you know, what the law says in, in a perfect world, in which we do not live, but they would suggest that. Uh, Vince make any objections or statements of support through an attorney or through an architect. Through a spouse, but that's not always relevant, that's not always practical, and that's not always possible. So I think what we have to do is, uh, before Mr. Uh, Light makes his comments, we just have to recognize that we as a board, um, treat him, uh, and his comments, whether it's for or against. Uh, no better, no worse than all the other comments, which, uh, but I might just, everyone understands that, just for the record, we always say that. So for that long introduction, round two of it, good evening, Vincent.
Just have a question, some comment.
Okay.
So I don't have, um, the blueprint in front of me, so what I, the question, um, concerns, it may be off. But I heard a couple of comments where I think it was setbacks were not, um. Respired, um, dimension and it was smaller. Um, and I think this is on the east side. Between the parking lot, between the driveway and the next lot. There was, um, a buffer and I believe I heard a comment that the buffer is smaller and it should be because otherwise. The driveway would have to be narrower. And then on the west side. I think I heard that the driveway starts off at ten feet in the south and becomes nine feet in the north. So my question is, couldn't both of those be solved? By just narrowing the house by a few feet so that you can then adjust both of those setbacks?
Uh, so I think, just to address them separately for a minute, yes, I think you're correct on the. East side of the, on the east side of the existing lot, along the common lot line that separates lot sixteen and fifteen. Is a three-foot planting buffer. Uh, I think the ordinance calls for five foot, so it's two foot shy. Um, on the, on the. West side of the proposed house, uh, along the common lot line with your residents. Um, the planting strip is compliant, um, and I think. You're accurate, as T and M pointed out as well, the driveway starts at ten foot, but then the actual parking spaces. Reduced, well, they gradually, I'll, I'll say gradually reduced to nine feet because, you know. Again, as we mentioned, the building and the lot line are not perfectly aligned, so they do, so. If the building was reduced in width, it could be, uh, combined.
Oh, okay. That was my question.
Easy. Thanks.
Okay, any additional questions for Mr. Mortarella? From the public. Okay, we'll close that public portion. Any comments from the board?
This witness.
Application.
I'm sorry, I do have one other witness.
Oh.
Um, it, 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 it will be five minutes or less, I assume. Cause we do need a use variance and. Uh, Mr. O'Neil is gonna testify as the positive and negative criteria. I think we need to address that, so.
Okay.
All right, but I, I don't anticipate his testimony.
All right, Mr. O'Neil, come on up and if you could just state your name and business address, please.
Edward W. O'Neil Jr. Sixty-five Monmouth Superdome, Red Bank.
All right, good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you're known to help you got?
I do.
And just for the record, you are testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed professional planner. Thank you, and your licenses and certifications are current and up to date?
Yes.
Thank you. And you've been in front of this board a number of times, so.
Yes, yes, I have. Uh, I'll try to be as brief as possible. We know the property, property is a corner property. With kind of one chunk taken out, which is the actual corner, which creates an L shape, this property that falls into two zones. Because it's a unique piece of property, I did a little bit of homework and looked at sandborne tax maps. And what I thought was the earliest, um, definition of this property was nineteen oh one. That's when they built Waverly Place. Prior to nineteen oh one, Waverly Place didn't exist, which was surprising to me. Uh, in nineteen twenty-two, they actually. Built Waverly and granted a subdivision that created the L shape. And then in the nineteen seventies, the town. Redesignated Broad Street as a professional office zone. But the property behind was still in the RA zone. So you've effectively had what were really amounted to two, one property, which is only designated, which is inconsistent with the zone. So if you follow the. Regulations of the municipal land use law, forty column fifty-five dash D seven seventy, which is powers.
You know, just if you could just grab the microphone a little bit closer.
Sorry, oh, there you go. Um. They talk about that the, um, the board has the, the power to grant the application because of the unique quality of the lot and other things. A burden of proof required by the applicant is the determination that the positive criteria. Be of benefit to both public and zone plan. And further that the variances, detriments, the negative criteria would not be substantial. In their entirety. So therefore it's a balancing act between the positive criteria and the criteria. So if we look at the positive criteria. And we look at the purposes of the municipal land use law, and we go down this long list. Um, designation E says to grant development of proper densities. So obviously you're granting a residential development in a single-family zone and it's one unit. Zone, so that to me is proper density. Uh, the second is number G, is provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for housing. And again, we are dealing with what was a one-time surface parking lot. And we make the United States into housing at the edge of the RA zone. So there's normally a buffer between residential and commercial properties, which I believe the. Shared easement of driveway accomplishes. Uh. Again, it is obviously zoned, the, the buildings on Waverly are residential. We have minimal, if any, fall variances on lot sixteen. The. Wall street parking meets the recess requirements, so I see the traffic impact is minimal, although I do understand from. One of the neighbors what the issues are, because again, it is a narrow street. Um, but I guess the prop, the, the proposal meets the ordinance, so it's nothing really they can do. Um, and then if you look at the master plan, there's, uh, two sections in the residential commercial development, talk about buffers, one says. Uh, they, they have titles in the master plan, one's balanced, the sections one and two talk about smart growth. Infill development is always considered.
Yeah, he is bringing the mic closer.
Uh, infill development is always considered smart growth because the infrastructure is there. Context is there. Um, also it talks about, uh, preserving the residential quality of the neighborhood. And so right now I think there's an empty lot that's, was a parking lot, filling it with a house that's miniature in size and scale of the other houses. Would be preserving that neighborhood. Uh, the other talks about, um, equity ability, which is the strengthening of existing character of the neighborhood. And again, it's a surface parking lot, it stands out like a sore thumb, filling it in with another house. Seems to be the positive way to do that. Um, back to that. Powers area letter I is to create a desirable visual environment. And I think the house that's proposed, if it's in keeping with the size and scale of the other houses, would be a positive visual improvement to the street. The negative criteria would be that. The, um, the zone plan will be strengthened by having it separated. Of the dental office, professional office, with an apartment above it, and then the residential development, and they're separated. And the parking, as proposed, will be further off the street, so visually it will be harder to recognize, harder to see. So I think that's again. Not really a negative criteria, that's a positive thing. Um, and again, I think the residential lot is consistent. So in conclusion. I think that given the requirements of municipal landings law, I don't see this having a situation where the negative. Criteria substantially are substantial or certainly outweigh all of the positive criteria to the zone plan, zoning ordinance. And context of the property itself.
I have a question perhaps for Jackie. Um, I'm looking at the zoning analysis on the front page and it, it shows the house in the RA district. It shows the side yard setbacks as combined. Are you able to combine the side yard setbacks?
Yes.
So they don't need a variance for the, the short side, the short buffer on the other side?
I don't think so.
So there's two. So there's the. The, are, the way how our ordinance is written there is, um, the side yard setback for one side and then a combine of the two sides. So if the combine of the two sides equals that, what the maximum is. I'm sorry, what the minimum is, then they don't need it. They would just need it for the one side.
Okay, is it ten feet in RA on side yard setbacks? So just one side has to be ten foot?
Yes, and then a combine of the.
And now remember, they're measuring. From the common lot line.
To the principal structure?
Right, so they're measuring from the. Edge, the right edge of their driveway. That's thirty-two feet because they're, they, you know, you know what I'm saying? Their proposed lot line. Is the easternmost property line.
And that's the one that's short, shorter. It's at the east side. I'm looking at the compass here.
Can you, um?
So in the RA, it's a side yard setback of one side of twelve feet. And then both sides have to have a combine of thirty, so one can have power re equal up to thirty. But.
But does it equal thirty? Like through the whole, cause I see a home and the ten-foot wide driveway.
Can the applicant, can the applicant's team please show, um, the board where the setbacks are measured to, like on the plan?
Cause I see the structure and then on the left side of the, of the site land, there's the ten-foot driveway that reduces to nine, and then I see the trees on that side. So I don't know if that's the twelve.
Side, I guess on the left-hand side, I guess it's twelve, that's twelve feet. From the property line and then on the other side is twenty-seven, well, what do we say, thirty?
Thirty-two, right.
From the property line.
I'm just wondering where we get thirty-two if I'm just measuring from the house.
From the house all the way across. To where the property line is, the new property line is.
Right, so, so what Sean is saying is this is the edge of the house.
Well.
The property line is actually here. So if you measure from the property line to the building, it's twenty-seven plus five, thirty-two.
That's a different property, not your own, after it's subdivided.
No, no, the property line is here. This is, this is the property line and will remain the property.
So the house would have that as part of their property?
Yes, the division stops here.
So.
So, yeah, that's, the easement is here, but the easement is on the property line for the single family.
Okay, so this is not the new lot.
This is the new lot, all of this is.
All of this here is the new lot, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I guess. I guess to your point, you know, should we be measuring from the easement line? Right?
That, that's.
Built on the easement.
They're not, they're not proposed, you have to measure from the property line. Their, the, their proposed property line is what he showed you. Their proposed property not line is not the easement line. So the definition of the setback is from the property line to the principal structure. I understand what you're saying. Because in reality, you're gonna see bushes and you're gonna think that the property is narrower. Um, but that's not what they're proposing. They're proposing a lot line. Where they show it, not.
Okay, so the new person buying this house or building this laus, uh, house is gonna own property. In the easement, it's just a larger easement that I'm used to looking at, and they'll never be able to build on it. And they still own it and pay taxes on it, but it'll be for the use of next door.
That's their proposal.
I just think it sounds very problematic. Like if I own that property, you know, and I wanna build a ten thousand square foot house. You know, in, in that space, but I'm choked by the driveway of the property next door.
Their testimony is that. The setbacks that they're proposing on the plan. You'll, they'll have to be followed, you know, like.
Oh yeah, I know, they'll, they'll be forced to.
Yeah, correct.
But I think it's doing a great disservice to a future property owner on the street. I live on a very busy street too.
Just, just in response to the question. Anyone that goes to purchase this property, if, if the subdivision is granted. Uh, that easement gets recorded as a second half of the deed.
Yeah, forever.
So, yes, so anybody that goes in to buy the house knows what they're getting into. Um, I would admit to you that, um, we don't, we don't watch a lot of real estate. Situations like this are not that unusual, not. I mean, I, I'm. I'm.
Is there a choice made to subdivide, giving, maybe because I know that we're touching two different zones here. You know, subdivide so that the office owns its own parking lot and driveway? And then the house could be smaller and then have the proper setbacks for the house. Was there any consideration to putting the new parking area? This might not be, maybe it's not new, with the building that it services?
Well, here's the problem. Already, and the reason we needed a user is. We can figure lots like that would be a major battle nation of the zone. And would be much more difficult. So if, if at some point in the future, somebody wanted to sit down with the owner. Example, when this property is sold, somebody wants to build a two, a two, a single-family home. What they could do is, if they want it, they could go to the owner there and ask if they wanted to cooperate and redraw the lot limits. That would be.
We're pushing that battle to a future owner if they ever wanted to deal with it.
If, if they wanted to, but, but I would tell you that that they would have to come before this board, and then the board would have to review it then and consider whether or not that was something that you consider. It's, it's a, it's a delegate issue, and that's why I said, I, I deal with these all the time. It's not common by any sense of the imagination to do what you're suggesting, what, what, excuse me, to do what you're suggesting. Because of the, of the zone.
And would they have to go to planning, Shauna, at that point, you know, it, to, to subdivide by pulling, I don't know how it works, by pulling part of a residential property into the commercial zone? What would somebody have to do for that?
That would go before the planning board. Well, it also depends on the use of what they're going to use it for. So I think one of the issues with this property is that it splits between two zones. That connection there, and because the RA is strictly single-family zone, and the way how I guess these guys have, the applicant have, um, divided the lot, they split it exactly along where the zone splits itself.
An RA district allows for a commercial driveway?
No, that's why they, we needed to...
That's why it's here?
Yes, that's why it's here. If it was, if it didn't need the parking, then they would have went before the planning board for just a subdivision with both variances. But the D one triggers it.
Is it two sides of the same coin to do the work to move commercial space into RA? Or moving residential space into the...
That the, that parking space, that it would still split the two zones into, well, if they would have shifted the property line to where the parking, that drive aisle is closer to the new structure, then that property with the dentist that makes use building is still partially in the RA zone. So I think the reason why these guys wanted to make it cleaner was so that one lots in the single-family zone and the other lot is in the professional office zone. Because of the use, it's just that the parking is the issue. Because had they done that, then the parking would have been landlocked, since there's no option for them to bring parking or create a driveway onto broad.
I, I would also express, and just being candid, I've been involved in land use. I was on this planning board right back for nineteen years. That would really cause a problem. And I think if anybody appealed it, that, that appeal would be one in five minutes. And that whole attempt to redraw the lines without, without the zoning being changed would get thrown in.
Yeah, that would probably, on the boroughs end, we would have to redraw the district line itself. So that it wouldn't impact, I guess, the, the driveway and the parking, the accessory parking could be for the professional office. So we, the borough would have to change the, the lines of the district itself to make this add up and make it make sense. Other than what they're trying to do of doing the access easement on the residential property line.
Okay, thank you.
Aren't we, kind of, if this is approved, aren't we doing that now anyway?
Yeah, that is two sides of the same coin.
It is, it's the same thing. And just if, just, just, just keep going down that path. If the line was shifted, what were the setback requirements again? Thirty total?
Thirty total as well.
So you'd have to, you're going to create a lot that would be
undersized.
Fifty feet wide. So you'd have like a skinny, a twenty-foot wide house, you know? If you wanted to comply with the setbacks, your new lot line, your new lot would be fifty feet wide, right?
Which is non-conforming.
Which is not conforming, and then you'd have a house that would be twenty feet wide instead of thirty feet wide. I guess that's, that's what the result is if you shift that lot line.
How do they get into the dentist's office now?
Waverly.
Yeah, there's a, there's an existing parking lot that's got a...
Is this the one they want to keep using?
Okay.
Hey, any other questions for? Yes.
Call me Mr. B. Labor. I just, I'm struggling still with the discussion about the size of the proposed house relative to other houses in the neighborhood. Because I think I heard conflicting things from Mr. Martin, Mr. McNeil said it's commensurate in size and scale with other houses in the neighborhood. And then I think I heard Ms. Johnson say, your houses are like half that big. May I ask Ms. Johnson and Mr. Lake how big your houses are? That, I, I'm just looking for some facts to go on here. Yeah, thank you.
My house, my house is roughly, I want to say thirteen fifty total. Roughly.
And my house is about thirteen fifty total as well. In fact, the average single home, single-family home on Waverly is about thirteen hundred square feet.
The majority of our houses actually were all built around the same time, and they all actually are almost all the same. Almost all of them, not every single one of them, but I would say eighty-five percent of the houses on Waverly are that.
Provided what you're saying is accurate. And I'm thinking the phrase, the proposed twenty-seven hundred square foot house is not commensurate in size and scale with the others in the neighborhood. Just to come, it, it, it is or it isn't. Yeah, are you saying there are no houses that are comparable to the size of this house?
Waverly has single-family homes, double-family homes, and homes that have four residences in them. The single-family homes on Waverly are all small. The houses that are commensurate to the size posed would be like a four-family.
Okay, and, and, and I heard the parking issues are some of those with the four-family homes?
There were, there was all the homes, because a lot of them don't have driveways.
I was actually, in my comments later, I was going to go through them.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. O'Neill? Okay, close out. Well, I guess, now, any comments from the board members on this application?
Yeah, I have a comment. I, I wasn't clear. You had, when Mr. Light had suggested, um, if you shrunk the house a foot on each side or one or two feet on each side, and you commented that he was correct, but I wouldn't understand, were you agreeing to that or you weren't agreeing to that?
I was agreeing that he's correct, that if you, if we shrink the width of the house, that the planting can be compliant.
Right, and so are you going to agree to shrink the house?
I guess if it's actually presented to us, we probably would, yeah.
I, I would, perhaps, I would, I would suggest that you accept that condition, but we didn't want to worry about it until the question was, was brought up.
Yeah.
So what would the recommendation be? Because then that changes the setback. And on what side are you going to be shifting it? Or is it on both sides?
Like if you pulled off this east side and made it like an eight-foot setback from this, I know it's not the property line, but it's the dividing line where the shrubs are, it would give even more buffer to the driveway. I just imagine being in my bedroom and hearing cars come in and out. I understand that it's not operating now. But this could be a gym, you know, or something, you know? If, if the house was smaller, because it, yeah, I'm still stuck on the two sides of the same coin, because I, even though that's a non-compliant lot, we're building a house on the non-compliant lot, which, you know, we don't have a combined thirty feet because it's not compliant. But we're still making a house in that box, even though it's not compliant. So I think, to be fair, if it had a more decent setback, you know, we have ten, maybe twelve on one side, and it won't be thirty, because like you said, it would be a twenty-five-foot house at that point, but maybe more room on the other side to make it less obtrusive and give somewhat of a sense of a setback next to that large driveway. I don't know how everyone else feels.
Parking spaces on the the, the west nearly side of the proposed home, they're, they're compliant, correct?
I think you have the nine-foot one? No.
Okay, so we took a foot off.
Right.
And then we're totally compliant, correct?
Correct.
And if we took a foot off on the other side, that, that doesn't hurt us in any manner. Then you could shift it to to the west.
How about instead of a thirty-foot wide house, you make a twenty-five-foot wide house?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be...
Because if you had a substandard lot, you'd need to build a twenty-foot wide house, right? So this kind of splits it in the middle.
Yeah, maybe not compliant, you know, because that would be, it wouldn't fit.
Right, so then you'd have, instead of, so you'd, you know, two, instead of thirty, you'd have twenty-five, add two on the west side and three on the east side, yeah, however.
We would be amenable to that suggestion. I, I would just want to clarify if we're just reducing the width of the building or if we're reducing the width of the building and shifting the easement as well.
Oh.
No shifting, easement stays.
The width of the building.
Okay, and only because, correct me if I'm wrong, Vince, your initial question was about increasing the width of the planting buffer along the common lot line between sixteen and fifteen.
Yeah, that was my initial question. But I didn't, I didn't have the blueprint to crack.
Okay.
What, what's that, what's the buffer, that buffer supposed to be?
That planting strip should be five feet wide, it's three feet wide.
So if you made it five feet wide, you'd have to shift the driveway over two feet. Yeah.
Oh, that would increase here.
No, Vince is right. If you, if you shift, we shift the easement over, everything comes compliant.
Yeah, but do you really want the driveway closer to you?
Yes.
Well, just one question, I'm sorry, Jackie, did we? So the minimum gross floor area for the zone for two-story homes is one thousand five hundred square feet, so we're making it less com- less, less conforming now because we just reduced the gross floor area of the first floor.
Well, it was only thirteen fifty proposed.
So we're just making it, I, I mean, we're making it less conforming, because just for that zone, it's fifteen hundred. To circle back to... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, that was my mistake. It's eight hundred, sorry.
You just said the average house is thirteen fifty.
Sorry, sorry, the ground, the, the, with at least
Eight hundred.
One thousand five hundred square feet with at least eight hundred square feet of the ground floor area. So never mind, there's not an issue, sorry. I read it.
I'm, I'm just see, you know, now I'm more confused with what I had asked before. Is whoever's got, I mean, we're doing it to sub, we're here to subdivide a lot, right? We're subdividing, somebody else is going to come and build.
Yes.
Is that person going to be sitting before us? Because
That's why...
Not every, like, that's what I...
That's why we want to make sure that the setbacks are
Everything is, okay.
They need to be, because they would need to build according within that bill, build...
That'll be in the ordinance like I had asked before, but now I'm getting a little confused.
It would be in the resolution.
Okay, so they won't be before us then?
If they comply with the, um, the buildable area that you, this board has approved, if they make it larger, then they would be back before us for full variance.
Okay, okay. Just as, if I had to choose where the five foot, if you make it a skinnier, you go from thirty feet to twenty-five, I would make the setback from twelve, on the west side, fourteen feet instead of twelve feet and thirty-five feet from the east side. So basically,
From the...
From both sides, you're, you're, you're shrinking it.
So from the left-hand side, you're suggesting fourteen feet.
Right.
From the right-hand side, you're suggesting thirty-five.
So you're three feet away from the driveway.
And you're including the, the five, you're including the five-feet buffer.
Right.
So then can we go back to the, so, um, we were speaking, we would be happy to reduce the size by three feet, I think was the...
I said five. From thirty to twenty-five.
Yeah, we, we just said, yeah, seven. But does that, is that, I think, that's what Vince was requesting, I'm not sure. I wasn't requesting any particular size.
Vince, just speak into the mic, please, sorry. Up beyond that side, isn't it?
I wasn't suggesting any particular size. I was protect, um, trying to come up with a solution to get around the setback issues.
We like your solution, though.
Yeah, I mean, but I do actually would support Jacqueline's, um, suggestion. Overall, I think the house is too large.
Well, what, what the square footage be? What's the difference in the square footage between if you reduced it from thirty to twenty-seven or thirty to twenty-five? So what, twenty-seven is what, what?
If the, uh, so if we take five, uh, so if you go to a twenty-five-foot building, it would be a reduction of forty feet, I'm sorry.
So it'd be a twenty, uh, twenty-two fifty square foot home, right? At, at twenty-five. Which is sounds commensurate with the other single-family homes that are on the block. It actually sounds, it's bigger, still bigger. So I mean, I think you're doing pretty good there with the, with the twenty-two fifty. Personally speaking.
So have we come to any
One once.
Agreement on that?
Nine twice. Four, twenty-five feet.
Thank you, and we, I, I think that, address some of the concerns about the size of the building. For one, some of the setback issues that there were. So now we'll just, any comments from the board on this application?
I, I think the, uh, smaller house is appropriate, but I would like to, well, reserve my opinion until I hear the comments from the, you know, neighbors.
Gil, anybody else from the board?
Yeah, I, you know, I like, I, I think you have really, uh, given a great effort. I like the idea of a single-family home. I appreciate that, because I think, quite frankly, that the town is being overrun by, uh, large developments, and I'm happy you're doing the single-family, but I think twenty-two fifty is, is a, is a very nice home, um, for a lot of people in this town. It's bigger than most, so. Um, but I do commend you a hell of an effort, and I, like, I appreciate it.
Okay, now we'll open up comments from the public.
Actually, just a question. Would that then set a tone?
Just state your name for the record, please.
It's well, thank you. Twenty-two fifty, I think, is a beautiful-sized home too. Hope you're happy with that. I know that it was a stretch, um, but does that also then a president shouldn't, other people on the street would want to build onto their homes that would then allow us to be consistent with anything new building? Does that?
It all depends on if it's conforming, so it depends on how big the addition is. So it'll, it, it's, it's on a case-by-case basis, as long as it...
Yeah, just because we approve, if this application's approved, just because we approved one house that's twenty-two fifty square feet doesn't mean we have to approve others with, as Shauna was saying, a whole bunch of other different circumstances, the size of lot, location, all those things.
Good, good question.
Okay, again, any comments from the public, so we can wrap this up?
Just a name for the record, please?
Mike Barber.
All right, Mark, uh, and your address?
Waverly Place.
Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, so you go ahead? Thank you.
The only comment I have is that we are still concerned about parking, we, we are directly across the street from this project and uh, we don't have a driveway. So we have to, we're on the street and it's we've been in the house now for almost thirty years and we see it getting more congested, more congested each year. And I know that they based the parking on Joe was the dentist which is a small practice. And we're just concerned if he sells that practice, he's going to go in there and parking is just not, I know he don't know. Not, it's a real concern. If uh, the practice that goes in there is much bigger. And is there, like Isabel said, seven days a week. And that my wife is going to find out parking way down the block or in, at McKenna's office and having to walk to our house. That's the comment that I have.
You can get in my office, I have weekends, I can tell you that.
But that is a big concern, Waverly's, it's a small street and uh, only parking on one side. And uh, like we discussed, in the middle of the block, it's all apartments. So they're all parking on the street. Right now, it's, it's an issue. It's an issue.
Thank you, thank you.
Vincent Light.
Thank you.
Waverly. Um, I first wanted to thank Mr. McKenna for facilitating that meeting that he had at the end of October between the neighbors and the applicant, where we went over many of the issues. Um, many of those issues were resolved. But the one issue that, as you earlier, tonight hasn't been resolved is parking. So I wanted to express my concern and give some comments about parking on Waverly. Waverly doesn't have delineated parking spaces on the street. Now, because of that if people are considerate and take up only the amount of space that they need for their car. There is a total of twenty two parking spaces on Waverly. The entire street, twenty two parking spaces. If people are considerate, if they're not considerate and they park like in the front of the house in the middle of a large area, that number drops quickly to fifteen spaces plus. Now, who needs to park on the street since it's a residential area, you wouldn't think that many houses have driveways or garages. Well, nobody's got a garage that their car fits in. The houses were all built in the early nineteen hundreds. And the buildings in the back are not designed to house cars. Waverly has houses without driveways, houses with driveways that are too short that can only fit one car, so people don't have to look on the street. We also have multifamily houses with parking in the back that cannot accommodate all of the cars for the multifamily house. So they park on the street. And we even have a multifamily house that doesn't even have a driveway right next door, so they have to park on the street. Many times, people come before the parking, before the zoning board and ask the board to bend the rules when it comes to parking. Usually because their plans have been in the parking requirements. I would like to, the board to consider the opposite side of that point. Here we have a situation where there are currently eighteen parking spaces and the proposal drops the number down to eight. A full ten spaces shy from the current situation. Now, even though they met, they meet the requirements set forth in the requirement, in the regulations. I would like to point out that the current business needed more parking spaces and expanded their lot twice to add more parking spaces for their business. Each time they added two more spaces. Let me repeat that. They needed more parking for the business and so they expanded their lot to accommodate that parking. Waverly should not be the parking lot for the professional offices on Broad or Maple. The residents there need the spaces themselves. Thank you for listening to my notes. I'd like to respond.
Okay. Any, any additional comments from the public before we close the public portion? We will close the public portion, Mr. McKenna.
Um, I'd, I'd like to respond to uh, Vince's comments. And I, I have the highest respect for this, the highest respect for Vince, in fact, I appointed him to and I, I great respect for him, we've been friends for many years. Uh, it is unfortunate perhaps that Waverly has the problems that it has, and I think there are ways, as I had suggested earlier, of addressing them through the proper path. And that is to go to the municipality and see what, if any thing the municipality can do to help in that particular area. These property owners have a right to develop their property. They could have come in and sought another variance, youth variance, and said okay, you want us to build all the people parking lot? Double the size of the office and we'll have and we'll still meet our parking requirements and you'll be looking at a different situation. They didn't do it. If you recall, when it first came to the board. Um, I sat down with the owners of this property. And they looked at this property and looked at many different opportunities. And to their credit, they said this should be a single family home, that's what this neighborhood is, that's what this neighborhood deserves. And they came up with the plan that they, that they did. I think they were extremely sensitive and the fact that the board um, made so many suggestions, as did T and M. And they have accommodated basically every single suggestion that's been asked of them to the point of even cutting down the size of the house by a third shows a good base of these property. And I would also suggest to you that from a legal standpoint, they have the right to do what they're requesting to do and they have no affirmative obligation under the law to solve the parking problem for Waverly. I, I, I know this is a block away, I go by there, it'll be that. I agree that I acknowledge that. But you can't pull one property owner up and say we're not going to let you look in here because you got a solid apartment. That's not what this is about. So with all the respect to the people that spoke in opposition and I, I like them and I know them, I think they're, they're really nice people. I agree that, that this application should be denied because of the parking problems that have, that exist now and have existed for the past years. Um, as I said, I go up to lots of ways, you play baseball in that area all the time. Those parking problems aren't new. And they're not going to be solved or significantly increased um, by allowing one more home to be put on the block. So I, I would respectfully ask the board to consider all of the compromises and, and attempts that, that have been made to um, to appreciate concerns of the neighbors. As Vince pointed out, we dealt with the meeting with the neighbors. Um, there, there were a couple of neighbors there that actually spoke out on the opposite side, that really would like to see a house there. Um, that parking lot's ugly, et cetera, et cetera, and we get it. So we've done our best to try to compromise and work with the board to come up with a solution. And I think that the fact that that the suggestion was made, um, could you reduce the size of the house and then to, to credit Mr. Madaral and your partners, you've agreed to do that. Be, be as well the individuals that you're dealing with. But I would just add more to it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, before we make a motion to um, approve or deny, Mr. Kennedy, would you go over?
Of course.
Some of the
if I've taken the liberty of, of writing some potential conditions of approval, if the application were, were to be approved, and of course, we don't know that yet. Uh, so a couple of things, number one, uh, our standard be compliance with all the promises, commitments and representations uh, the team made throughout, the applicants team made throughout this public hearing process. Compliance with the terms and conditions of the Board Engineers Review Memorandum, I think we marked that in S A eight. Uh, condition of compliance with all the affordable housing rules, regulations, contributions required. Uh, compliance with all applicable outside approvals. And with the outs, with the additional caveat that if the application materially changes or the relief materially changes as a result of those outside approvals, you, you need to come back. We usually have a twenty four month timeframe within which building permits are to be obtained. Subdivision has to be perfected in accordance with the timeframe of New Jersey law. And if it's approved, um, the subdivision is going to be perfected by deed. The deed would have to be approved by the uh, board attorney and the board engineer, including the meets and bounds description. And we always have the tax assessor has to approve the new lot designations. Um, uh, we would have to make sure, we had a lot of talk about uh, Amanda, uh, some good questions about the easement, so the easement is actually going to be a recorded document, but it's going to talk about who has to mow the lawn or plow it or pave it and who's responsible and you know, you're going to, both sides are going to want to make sure if you tripped on it, you're not going to sue me, and if I trip on it, I'm not going to sue you. So that, obviously, that easement would need to be reviewed, approved typically by the board attorney and the board engineer, and we'd have to make sure it gets recorded. Um, and um, I lean to your point. I think that somehow, uh, whether it's in that easement or some other document, I think you just want to sounds like you would want uh, the public to be extra particularly aware of when the person who buys this house, uh, or this property recognizes the limitations that, that are going to be associated with any approval. So we can have something in the subdivision deed or something else to that effect, if, if that's what the um situation is, if desired by the board. Um, we're also going to have typically, uh, before any CFOs are issued, we have the professional uh, sign of certification confirming that the improvements were constructed in accordance with the approved plans, in accordance with the um, uh, uh, testimony presented in accordance with any terms of approval in the resolution. And then grading and drainage details would need to be worked out to the satisfaction of the board engineer. Jackie, do we need anything about EV parking spaces, we, we don't know, okay?
I'm sorry. And don't make this longer, but if this gets approved and they create the two lots and the easement has to build like all the buffers that they, who's planting the, the landscaping that's in both properties?
So I would suggest that we say, um, because when the the owner of the property right now is going to be the owner of both lots and usually the owner can agree amongst themselves because he's going to do it. And so what we would say is the burden of who has to create and maintain um, the buffer uh, et cetera, has to be spelled out in the easement, I mean, is that a fair way to address it?
Install, it's the installation and maintenance.
Installation and maintenance.
Like this really is the installation.
Right.
Because the maintenance would be on the property owner.
Okay, so I mean, would, would that address, it's a very excellent question, would that be a, addressed if we had them address it in the easement to say which property owner is responsible for the installation?
Um. To me, I think the applicant should
Okay.
Be responsible for it.
Uh, I, I assumed that that's the case.
Okay, so we'll put that in the um in the resolution as a condition. Uh, we also compliance with ADA regulations and there was a lot of talk about the landscaping and I think what this board typically does is as a requirement of anything, uh, usually you have a requirement that the applicant and the owner is perpetually maintained, replaced that landscaping, uh, because that, that's important. Um, and let's see. Bunch of other things came up tonight, so we talked about uh, the grading and drainage details. Um, specifying the setbacks on the plans and we're going to talk about that momentarily. And um, a recalculation of the unoccupied open space. Um, you're going to confirm uh, the materials for the damage curb uh, replacement, I guess with the uh, Mr. McKenna, is the difference between what you think the county wants and what was in the T and M letter, so we just, I think the county controls.
Yeah, the county's going to call, surely.
Um, and we're going to have the um uh, the subject arcing space as referenced in T and M's letter three point two, it's going to be for residential unit only. And there's going to be a sign to that effect. We talked about um um, I think Jackie, in one of your uh, review, in the review letter, I think it said it's not going to exceed a three bedroom two story house with open cellar, or that's at least what, what the that we don't know yet, right?
Really talk about that, that's not really what they, I don't think they're testifying that they're building this house, so.
No, not.
Okay. So then we're going to have the plans scaled uh, correctly, uh, no light spillover.
Excuse me. I have to bother you right now. But you mentioned the plans being scaled. Will these plans be the ones that are shopped to the builder, developer or the purchaser? As we see them here with a note, your notes to the changes, or will there be a separate set of plans that actually reflect?
I, I would highly, highly, highly.
This wasn't correct anyway.
No.
And then we're changing, making changes to it as well.
I would highly suggest, and one of the um, conditions that we're going to get to, and I think it's a excellent plan, is that one of the conditions is revised plans reflecting all these conditions need to be reviewed and approved. So every condition that we're talking about here that are relevant to plan revisions have to be put on the plans and so that Shawna is going to have a, a set of plans that's going to be signed that incorporates all these changes, Jackie, that would be the way we would normally do it.
Right, right.
But I think Sharon, that, that's an excellent point, because this would just be too confusing for anybody.
Mr. Kenny, I, Mr. Kenny, I just wanted to be clear on this. And and I, it's, it's Sharon's question also, so the person who buys this may want it to, I mean, a two bedroom house.
Right.
And they want, they want, they have two bedrooms on the first floor, we're not going to do taste test.
No, but things like the twenty five foot width and the setbacks.
That, all of that, we totally agree. We're not going to be uh, holding out a package and say, here's what the house has to look like. People would want that whoever builds this floor is, not to be whatever they want, it's more of.
Right, it's going to be subject to the square foot limitation and the, the building envelope.
It's not going to be subject to a single family home.
It could be. Well, there has to be a single, as permitted as a right. It's a single family home. He decides the.
Yes. Okay, that's.
If they're in a single family home, they have to.
Application that's been presented and if you're going to approve it, it was for the construction of a single family home. So if it's not that, I would say they have to come back.
I think a little, one, just one on as far as the installation of the plantings.
And the resurfacing of the.
Well, the resurfacing lots, that's all. You know, concerned about is if we're cutting in areas, areas that are going to be upgraded, you know what I mean, there's going to be demolition and all that stuff coming on. It doesn't make sense for us to be the people that putting the buffer in, I mean, we, we could put the purchaser of the property on notice that you're going to have to meet the planting schedule. But for us to install it, then if somebody could, they rip it all out three months later, it it just doesn't make sense.
But I think you have plantings on your lot too, eh, right?
On our, on our property, we are definitely.
Right.
Yeah, no, but I'm, I'm just talking about, you know, the plantings that go on, the lot that we're selling.
I agree.
It makes sense for us, and by the way, they might not even like it. You know, they could rip it out and do something else about it.
So we, we can address that, um, uh, Jackie, did I, um, I, I wrote down fire truck circulation uh, needs to be approved by fire officials, is that something that we have to?
Needs fire department office needs to review the.
Review, okay.
Right.
Um.
They're never going to be.
T and M letter five point one, submit the missing elevations. Um, now there was going to be um, additional, the plans are going to be revised. Now, there was gonna be additional, the plans are gonna be revised so as to have an additional drywall for the new single-family residential unit, and we usually say that that's gotta be installed and maintained in accordance with the manufacturing standards and other best practices, which is pretty standard. T and M's letter point, five point five about the minimum one percent slope for drain purposes needs to be addressed. We talked about bamboo removal on the western and northern side of the property. And I think Jackie, your letter also said something about also consider or utilize bamboo root guards, and what Mr. McKenna said is to make the resolution stick. Elimination values on the plans. No light spillover. Again, we're gonna clarify that the submitted elevations are not what is necessarily gonna be built. And again, particularly since we then had the subsequent revision to the width of the home. And we're gonna make sure, I lean to your point, that whatever conditions of approval, we're gonna make sure that obviously it applies to any property owner, any successor owners, transcrees. We're going to talk about outside approvals. Okay.
Question, question. There's no parking variance needed for this application, is there?
To my knowledge, no. Sean, I didn't see any parking variance. And then, so now what we're gonna do is just a couple of real quick things. Is just, we're gonna reduce the house width from thirty feet to twenty-five feet, correct? And, but the easement is staying in the same location that is currently on the plans. And the west side setback is going to be increased from twelve feet to fourteen feet. And the east side setback is going to be thirty-five feet.
From thirty-two.
All right, so increased from thirty-two to thirty-five feet. And now, just, do you know offhand, what you on the spot? What are the variances? Are there any variances for any side yard setbacks or not because of that?
Right, no, no variances.
So we're gonna say no side yard setback variance is needed. We're gonna say that the home, the single-family home, that if this application is approved, is going to not, to exceed, Jackie, two thousand two hundred fifty square foot, correct? Now, do I say that's total, or do I say anything per floor, or just say total?
That's not counting the basement in case it could be misinterpreted later.
Total, not including the basement? Sean, I hope you're gonna be able to read my writing, because you're gonna be in trouble. And then, the last thing we have is, all right, so the, we're gonna narrow the language about installing and maintaining. At least the applicant is going to do it with regard to its lot. And we're gonna have memorialized that, make sure that any purchaser is aware of it, the applicant to resurface the lots for the T and M review letter. Any performance and maintenance guarantees that the law or the Red Bank requires. And.
Can I add, Kevin? And I said it in my letter, but I just wanna make sure that the deed, that the
Where you go?
Oh, that they should submit a minor subdivision plan, not just do, not just perfected by deed, so that it shows the driveway easement.
Okay, so we want, just, you know, there's two ways to perfect a subdivision. The common way is when it's a minor subdivision, just submit a deed. And, but you're saying, let's have it perfected by map, so that it actually shows the easement? Jackie, is what you're saying?
Yes, right.
And I mean, another way, we might be able to do it, and this might actually be better. Do it by deed, but then have a minor sub map attached to the deed.
That's fine, too. Yeah, as long as there's a plan that shows what the building foot, like what the new lot lines are, where the easement, the driveway easement is, and what the footprint, like what the setbacks are of this new, of this new lot, so that when you transfer it, somebody can visually see that the house is not quite centered and those setbacks are clear.
So, Mr. Chairman, and again, any other conditions that were referenced in T and M's letter or were referenced during the public hearing process would be included. But I think we got the overwhelming gist of it.
Okay, would anybody like to make a motion to approve or deny this application? Based on all the stuff Mr. Kennedy just went over.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it based on Mr. Kennedy's, like, the position and also just say that I, for one, would be happy to see a home there instead of an empty lot.
I'm gonna second it. I, I don't know, remember sitting on the board where we had somebody do a single-family home. Like, they've always been multi to what Paul said. And I like the idea of a home on that street, a single-family home. I know the parking, we have a two on our street, and it is crazy. You have to go to the town room.
Yes, please.
And Tori?
Yes.
Ray Mas?
Yes, and I'd just like to thank the residents for coming in and voicing your concerns and hopefully we made some, the applicant made some concessions that'll help a little bit. We all know parking at Red Bank, doesn't matter which street you're on, it's a problem. You know, where, again, maybe the town can help if you go after them a little bit, so, yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Stanira?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Paul Kierke?
Yes.
Amanda?
Calabana?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.